We will now call to order the regular village council meeting of October 15th, 2019. Did I miss? I'm sorry.
A moment.
We will now call to order the regular village council meeting of October 15th, 2019. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the record reflects those who are present. I will now call the role of village attorney Sarah Phan.
Present.
Village manager Benton.
Here.
Councilman Brady.
Here.
Councilman LaFredo.
Here.
Councilman Melz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Birch.
Present.
Mayor Wagler.
Here.
Do you have quorum?
Thank you. We'll start with our presentations this morning. And our first presentation is a series of proclamations for Berry University.
You guys are gonna have to see.
Yeah.
All right. Do we have everyone?
Where's Buckey? Working on serving.
Well, today for item 4A, we're gonna do proclamations presented to Berry University's men's and women's tennis teams in recognition of the 2019 NCAA Division II Tennis Championships. So I have two proclamations here. I'm gonna read both of them into the record because I think this is exciting and very important. I am going to start with the women's team. I'll just take that point of privilege. Whereas Berry University Women's Tennis Team has persevered to become the 2019 NCAA Division II National Champion, concluding with Berry defeating Lynn University 4-2. And whereas the win propels the Buccaneers to their third straight love that, third straight women's tennis championship and fifth overall, breaking the record set in four previous seasons of two. And whereas the Barry's Women's Tennis Team concentrates on the joy camaraderie and skill of the game with all tennis team members contributing to the team's success. And whereas it takes a tremendous dedication and hard work to successfully balance schoolwork, athletics, and school activities. And whereas Miami Shores Village is proud of the 2019 Berry University Women's Tennis Team and congratulates. Now forgive me, I'm gonna try to get this right. Eleanor Bear, Alexandra. How do you pronounce it?
Bukzinski.
Bukzinski. Jill Eggleman, Carla Davila, Patricia Lopez Zuzza.
Machiewska.
Machiewska. Julie. Come on Julie, help me out here. Raza, okay. I apologize. Verena Schmidt, Caroline Schmidt, Hannah Seizer, head coach Avi Kegel, and assistant coach Nanda Alvez. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Crystal Wagler, mayor of Miami Shores Village, and on behalf of the village council do hereby call upon all residents of Miami Shores to join me in extending congratulations to these high achieving and successful young women recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent. Let's give them a hand. Third straight, congratulations. It's amazing. I'm, we're gonna present you with this first and then I'll do the men's and then we'll do a group picture if that's okay with you all. And I'd like to take one, another point of, as a former collegiate athlete, I appreciate the hard work that goes into winning something like this. So congratulations. That's just quite amazing and exciting. And the proclamation for the men's tennis team, whereas the Berry University's men's tennis team has persevered to become the 2019 NCAA Division II National Champion, following a 4-3 win over Columbus State University. And whereas the Buccaneers win their fourth national championship in men's tennis, 2010, 2013, 2015, and 2019, tying women's tennis for the most in the program. And whereas the men's tennis team concentrates on the joy camaraderie and skill of the game with all tennis team members contributing to the team's success. And whereas it takes tremendous dedication and hard work to successfully balance schoolwork, athletics, and school activities. And whereas Miami Shores Village is proud of the 2019 Berry University Men's Tennis Team comprised of Blake Beldon, Carlos Gomez, Ignasi Forcano? Does that make sense? Alejandro Ibanez? Tell me how it is?
Ibanez.
Ibanez. Gracias. Gallego? Martin Gutierrez? Flavio Matoli?
Matioli.
Matioli, Italian, okay. Pierre, give me that one. Pierre's last name. Montreal?
Montreal.
Alejandro Ortega Palacios? Daniel Ventura? Vivian Versaire? Thank you. Philippe Zupanik?
Zupansik.
Zupansik, this is a lesson. Head coach George Samuel and assistant coach Fred Bonal. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Crystal Wagler, mayor of Miami Shores Village, on behalf of the village council, do hereby call upon all the residents of Miami Shores Village to join me in extending congratulations to these high achieving and successful young men, recognizing their hard work and exceptional talent. Congratulations. I think the whole council should. Should we have the folks here in the council?
We're gonna do a little Tetris there, sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. Thank you. Ladies? So why don't we, how would you like to take this? I think this thing will be.
Were the guys in the other front? Sure.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. They deserve it. Okay. Madam Mayor, I just have some parting words for them. Is that okay?
Yes, okay, Councilman Melz.
I recall last year at this time, I said to you all that I don't want to jinx you, but we'll see you back next year to congratulate you for your championship. So here we go again. So mark it in your calendar. We'll see you next October for both teams to celebrate again a championship, okay?
Thank you, Councilman Melz. Next we'll welcome our new Berry University President, Dr. Michael Allen. And. There's Dr. Allen. There you are. So I'm just gonna read a little brief intro of you into the record if you don't mind. It's my pleasure to introduce Dr. Michael Allen, originally from Connecticut. He received his BA from Trinity College and his doctorate from the School of Ed at the University of Connecticut. He is the seventh president at Berry University, the first male president at Berry University. He's a seasoned higher education administrator with more than 25 years of experience. He's a former vice president of student affairs and director of athletics at Catholic University. He worked collaboratively with the university advancement to secure several multimillion dollar donations for support of capital projects and initiatives. He expanded career development and academic advising support through the creation of new Center for Academic and Career Success. He also launched a new Center for Cultural Engagement in 2016 to support the recruitment and engagement of underrepresented minority students. I'd like to welcome he and his wife Beth and their children Maya and James to the Village of Miami Shores. And I and the council look forward to building a meaningful, meaningful relationship with you and your family and the university. So with that, I welcome you to come have remarks and welcome. We're so happy to have you here tonight. Come on over to the podium.
I had no idea I was making remarks, so they would be very, very brief, simply to say thank you. Thank you for this wonderful recognition of our outstanding student athletes. Councilman Melz mentioned this. I don't know if people know how hard it is to win a national championship once. The amount of things that have to go right to do it like these folks have done is something we're just so proud of. So I'll say my own congratulations to you. I take no credit for it, but I'd love to be back here when I can take a little bit of credit. So I've met with Mayor Wagler, I've met with Mr. Benton, and I want to reiterate what I told both of them privately, which is all of us at Berry University very much look forward to being great partners with Miami Shores. There are wonderful opportunities for us to work together on all kinds of initiatives. We have great sports programs, as you know. We have cultural activities on our campus. We have expertise in our faculty and staff that we would love to share back with the community. And my family has really enjoyed living here for the months that we've been here. So look forward to getting to know all of you better. If you don't know yet, you're all invited to a little meet and greet reception at our house coming up in a couple of weeks. Love to see you there. And that's it. Thank you on behalf of Berry and look forward to getting to know everybody.
Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Please don't find us rude, but they gotta study.
They gotta study. It's hard work. I'm gonna present you with this welcome letter on behalf of myself and the entire council and the village, actually. So thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.
Yeah, same here.
All right. If I could get the council. If I had council in the picture. Can you lean in? One, two, three. Just one more. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Allen. Thank you. Congratulations, students. Congratulations. Next up we have item 4C, Dr. Charter School's State of the School Report presented by the wonderful Dr. Kelly Andrews.
I'm trying to stand over here. Thank you so much for having me and representing Dr. Charter School this evening. I did this State of the School Report last year at the Rec Center in August and I thought this might be a place where we could share our story, not just for you, but for all of Miami Shores. And being able to get the good news out for you of all the great things that are happening at DCS. So we have a wonderful school board of directors. From last year, you can see who we had. The ones that are highlighted have now been reappointed by the village council. And then we also welcome Andrew Lemke and Nikolai Hotze from the PTSA and a new village council member, Christian Olvert. So we did have three who retired. We thanked Jonathan Feldman and Malita Matos, as well as Ricardo Heredia, who worked with us last year. So we have three new faces on the board this year and quite quickly they are becoming a very important part of our board. So the board this year adopted belief statements and goals. And so you'll see the belief statements as part of this. But they come out of our vision and our mission. And our ESAC team proposed that a couple of years ago to take what we had in place and kind of pare it down so that it's something that we can recite, something we can remember, and something we put forward at every meeting and every staff meeting, every board meeting, so that we always know what our vision and mission are. So we recite the Dr. Charter School inspires students toward discovery, citizenship, and scholarship. We take DCS and we created that acronym. And our mission is empowering students to reach academic excellence to embrace community service as global citizens. The great news about that is that is a smaller sentence of the greater thing that was put together 15 years ago. It's still the same vision and mission, but it's condensed in a way that we can say it out loud, put it in front of us every single meeting, whether it's a staff meeting, a board meeting, or even a department chair meeting. We always make our decisions based on our vision and our mission. So one of our beliefs through education, students realize their strengths and weaknesses and develop confidence to become creative builders of their future. We also like to experience a lot of experiential learning that we bring back to the classroom, get out into the world, and then bring it back. Learning is most productive when there is a collaboration among students, parents, staff, and community partners. And we do get out into the community. As you can see, our students volunteering. Community service is a very big part of who we are and an expectation of every student. By the way, the students have to have 100 hours of community service in order to graduate. And you can see that just the last several years of graduation rates, between 98 and 100 percent. We graduate all of our students and it's a real celebration and we love to do that at Broad Auditorium at Berry University every year. So student achievement. I thought this would be a great thing to share with you, how we are doing stacked up against Miami Dade County Public Schools as well as the state of Florida. And you can see that we are continuing to outperform both of those entities every year. And this year we even took those student achievement results and the staff created goals of increasing that. So that is sitting in front of them to increase each one of those by 2 to 5 percent in each area. And then teachers then take those glowing goals, those school goals, and then create their own SMART goals for their classroom and for their students and for themselves. A few statistics. We range of a 96 percent attendance rate. And a couple of years ago, a gentleman stopped by and says, "How do you do that?" And I said, "It's just an expectation." And actually, I'd like it to be 97 because 97 percent says that every student has no more than two absences. And we know it's important for kids to be in the classroom every single day because when you miss something, it's really hard to catch up. So we boast of a 96 percent attendance rate. That's an average of 585 students last year. We had kids earn 158 dual credits last year between Berry University and Miami Dade County, or Miami Dade College. We had 163 student seats in AP classes last year. And 19 of our eighth graders completed high school algebra last year. We also have really respectful kids, students without office referrals on a daily basis. 98.9 percent of our students do the right thing all the time. Last year we had 41 students enrolled at dual enrollment just at the Berry University. We have two of those courses that are being taught, or actually four of those courses being taught on our campus. This year we're expanding that. We had six courses altogether offered last year. This year we're offering 10, several of which the students actually walk over to the Berry campus to take their courses. We had students who are enrolled in calculus and pre-calculus, statistics, Asian and Russian history, and general elementary mathematics, all at the college level. Two of our teachers that are on our campus are considered professors at Berry University. So our financials. And today you received our clean audit, the third in a row, and we're very, very proud of that. Our audits have no concerns for the last three years. We are maintaining a very consistent and conservative spending. We are living within our means and try really hard to have money left over at the end of the day and to also maintain our conservative savings in rainy day accounts because you never know what's gonna happen and we want to be prepared. We are celebrating our 15th year. Thanks to all of you and the vision that you put together all those years ago. Going through and reading through some of those historical documents in the last few weeks have been an absolute pleasure for me because I've learned so much more than what I knew about what it took to put this school together. And I'm so grateful to be at the school and doing and maintaining the vision and mission that you all put together. So we have four buckets that we really focus on to really for our strategic planning. Athletics, international travel, technology, and music. And the reason we have those buckets because they contribute to student life. Academics are really important and that is our main focus. But without a student life, it's just not, it's not a great place to be. And it is a great place to be because of some of these things. So I wanted to tell you about, we do international travel. And that's part of our global citizenship, part of our mission. You know, citizenship is developed through student-directed, teacher-facilitated, and family-supported experiences. And these experiences are vital. We are increasing the number of kids who are going on international travel every year. We expect 62 students going this year from the high school. And we're going to Berlin and Amsterdam this year. We've been to England, Ireland, Scotland, and Wales. We've been to France and the French Riviera, Italy, Switzerland, Monaco. Before that, they went to Iceland. They've been to Spain. The international travel is an extremely important part and it's growing every year. The best part about this is kids are getting to go even when they can't afford to go because of the community service and fundraising that they all participate in. Really, there's no barrier except the hard work it takes to go. And so the fact that we have even more kids chiming in every year and wanting to have this experience, it's really helping the program. DCS athletics. Well, we weren't built with an athletic field, gym, or any facilities, but we have nine sports that are doing really well. As a matter of fact, last year we sent our swim team, our cross-country team, and our track team to the state finals. And we have kids who are at, working at that level all the time. We've had student, we've had in the time I've been there, two student athletes who matriculated to colleges to play D2 sports from our school. So it's really fun. We have volleyball and basketball. We have track and field. We have now a new girls' weightlifting team that for the first time last year after starting, went to the regional finals for the very first time. And so that's taking off because that's something that we will be able to do, host at our school because we do have the facility for that. So that's, it's been really great. Baseball is still an up and coming sport at our school and I'm just really proud of our student athletes because they all maintain a very high GPA in order to be a participant and I'm very proud of them. Music. This was a lot of fun. When I first came, I thought, wow, we've got some really intelligent instrumentalists. We've got wonderful vocalists and the program is growing every single year. We have kids who come there and don't even know how to read music and by Christmas time, they're playing instruments and singing songs. We have grown out of our school and are now at the Miami Theater Center for our concerts twice a year. And that partnership has been really wonderful. They go on trips as well. They've been to Atlanta and New Orleans. They've taken master classes. And four or five times every year, the students take a field trip to the ARSH Center and are participating in all kinds of musical theater and concerts. It's a really great opportunity for our kids. Technology. So in 2017, the school decided to create a technology plan. And we decided that we needed to have laptops that are one-to-one for every student. This was really a big challenge financially because, you know, it takes about $8,000 just to install a laptop cart with 25 laptops in every classroom. Before that, we were a bring-your-own-device school and there were so many different devices and none of them really worked. And some of them did and so teachers really weren't using it. Now we're not only using technology every single day. The teachers, we have a learning management system called Canvas, which is, the reason we're using is because Berry uses it. And that, it's streamlining and helping our students become 21st century technology scholars. And so that's been really helpful. So the board was very committed to our three-year plan and this year we are one-to-one. So we are very excited about that. That didn't happen without a lot of fundraising. So Give Miami Day was a really big time. We earned $10,000 the first year, $13,000 last year. All of this went for technology. And then our Miami Shores community jumped in and gave us, we won grants with the alliance twice and the Rotary once. And all of that was all going to technology. So I'm very proud of the community for supporting us and for the board for taking really swift action to make sure that we could make this happen for our students. It happened faster than we expected, so we're very proud of that. We also last year wrote two federal and state grants. One, the Title IV Grant is for an enrichment. And we won that with $11,000 to put new instruments in the music department for kids who can't afford to buy or borrow or rent instruments. And then we also instrumented, became a part of the NDABEA family, which is a formative assessment program for our students and provided really high-level quality professional development for our staff. And then the State Safety and Security Grant was based on the FSSAT that we wrote. And I want to say thanks to the Miami Shores Police for being such an instrumental part of working with me to make sure that we have the safety audit done each year. That document for the first time was about 150 pages. This year it was over 167 pages of questions. And I couldn't have done it without the Shores Police Department helping me answer questions that only police officers would know. But Senate Bill 7026 provides that we have to have more upgrades to our schools. So with that grant, we had 49 new high-definition security cameras put into the school and that was worth $19,848. With the rest of the money that we earned, the $21,000, we replaced and upgraded our main gate and did some upgrade of lighting around the building. Some of the lights around the building needed all upgrading. So we used that $21,000 very quickly after we received it. So we're grateful for state and federal grants when we can earn them. So as some of you may know, our U.S. News &amp; World report comes out and that's actually school ranking for 2019 and I apologize for not changing that before I sent it, but we earned the Silver Award last year in 2019. We're one of the top 9 percent of, in the national rankings. We're in the top 11th percent for charter high schools. We're in the top 11th percent of Florida high schools and in the top 24 percent of the 129, which are now 140 charter schools in Miami Dade County. So we must be doing something right because we continue to be ranked and we are an A school for the 14th time out of 15 years. Last year we enrolled 585 students, 6th through 12th grade. It takes, we received about $6,500 per student. Last year, the class of 2019 earned $4,936,000 in financial aid and scholarships. That was 78 students. They're going to places like Duke, Mount Holyoke. They're going to Amherst and Rice and Penn State and all the Florida schools. And quite a contingency at Berry this year. So that's, that was a really wonderful thing to celebrate last year. We serve over 70,000 meals in our cafeteria. We had 153 student athletes with two daily bus rides, over 36,000 miles driven every year. Education is an enjoyable process when learners are engaged. Last year again, we had 41 students in dual enrollment. We have 60-plus this year. We have about 1,000 unique visitors to our website every day. DCS had 24 student athletes, all-state student athletes last year. And we need to increase our Facebook page followers. So if you haven't followed us on Facebook, you need to click on. And also I have a page, a Twitter page that I'd like you to check out too. I try to tweet. I'm not as good as I should, but. But the unique learning needs of every child should be addressed through appropriate and diverse instructional methods. And as you can see, our music team, our music students performed at the Florida Charter Conference last year and we're very proud of them. Learning is priceless and worthy of continuous community investment. A robust public education is essential for citizenship, democracy, and the common good. And this is a picture of three of our students who presented in the chemistry and physics competition at Berry University. And I believe this group won second place. In an environment where a student can err without being judged, risk-taking creates resilient thinkers and learners. These are some of our graduates from last year sporting their college gear at the end of the year. Meaningful learning occurs in the presence of meaningful relationships and that is a major part of what we work with our staff, not just to be collegial, but to create relationships. a major part of what we work with our staff, not just to be collegial, but to create relationships with students and families at Doctor's Charter School. And three years ago, I did kind of a, not a poll exactly, but I asked folks, what's the one thing you think about when you think about Doctor's Charter School? And the word that was used the most often was family. It is a family atmosphere. We're small, we're personal. When kids talk about us, they say really nice things, and it's because they feel like they belong, they feel connected. So we have partnerships with lots of folks, and we're very excited about all of our partnerships, and that continues to grow. We're reaching out all over the place to ask folks to join us, join, join the success of our students, because they're going to be our citizens, and we want them to be successful. So just a quick picture of the first day of school and the staff, and we're very excited. We were very excited and continue to be excited every single day. And our police department, I can't say good enough things about LeAnn Johnchuck, who is in our school every day, keeping us safe. Schools should provide a safe and secure environment for learners of all ages, and Miami Shores Police Department has been instrumental in that. And you can see, when we practice our drills, they come out and support us. And that's really important because we're learning new things all the time to be safe and secure. So the goals for this year that the board have adopted is that Charter, Doctor's Charter School will increase opportunities for student and stakeholder engagement, and that will ensure student growth through measures of academic, social, emotional, and physical successes, and that we will maximize our resources to provide the highest-quality educational opportunities for students in the Miami Shores community. But lastly, and the most important, is that we will successfully complete the authorization of a new charter with Miami-Dade County Public Schools. As you may know, it is our 15th year, and the charter is due at the end of this year. So we're in the process right now of putting together our application. We have a site review next week. We will go before the committee, probably in December or January. I'll be bringing you the copy of the application for your approval, probably next month before it's submitted. And we're really excited about moving forward because we, we've had 15 great years, and we expect 15 great more. Again, this was what I, the little poll I took a few years ago, it still rings true today. And these are our new hawks in DCS this year, so if you're ever out to the building, we have some new folks. We bring, we bring a new guidance counselor, several new English teachers, science, math. Our art teacher is from New York City, and this year, we have a new Director of Marketing and Development, Ms. Melita Matos, who is, by the way, helping us, leading the board in putting together our first event, which is a week from Friday, Evening in the Courtyard, and we hope that you will all attend. Special thanks to the Village, the Police Department, our recreational center, our Public Works, who are always coming out to the building and giving us a hand, our Board of Directors, the PTSA, our great faculty and staff, and the wonderful parents in our community. So we are on the road to a bright future, and I want to thank you all so very much.
Hi. So I just want to add one quick thing as part of the report. I know I'm new to the board, and for the record, Christian Olver, I live at 29 Northeast 102nd Street, and I'm on the board of DCS, and while I've just joined the board, I've had a crash course in the last two days because I'm working with Dr. Andrews on a fun project. And I do want to share two quick things. One, part of the project, I've been interviewing, and I spent two days onsite at the school, Monday and Tuesday. I apologize for my appearance. I just rushed from Homestead on a project to get here in time for this, so I apologize for being dressed down. But we spent all morning this morning, I was at Doctor's Charter at 7:00 a.m. And in through the interviews, I interviewed parents, teachers, students, the administration, our Vice Mayor. And one thing was common throughout, and these were impromptu questions, not scripted. I was talking about the experience at DCS, and there was one unique theme, which was Dr. Andrews. And I did want to share that. As we hear the report, everybody, from students, the parents, the faculty and staff, every time I ask what makes DCS unique and a wonderful place for student enrichment, everyone pointed to Dr. Andrews. And while I'm new to the school, it was very rewarding to see that we have such strong leadership who believes in inclusiveness, diversity, academic excellence, but really the holistic student enrichment. So we were really lucky to have Dr. Andrews. It's been my true reward to be able to spend a few days at the school. And then the second thing, as I met with my team and my crew for lunch today down in Homestead, they independently brought up another interesting tidbit since we spent two days observing and analyzing, putting footage together of the school, is everybody independently said, everyone was just happy at the school. The students had smiles, the teachers had joy in their face. And while everybody brings ups and downs every day like we do in our everyday life, for, for independent individuals who are new to the school for the first time in the last two days, to all come to the same analysis and feeling that it was a warm, open, and inviting experience, and they saw that in the students and the faculty and staff, also speaks to why we have a true treasure. I look forward, as a member of this community on the board, to continue to lift up the school, and as Dr. Andrews said, to 15 more great years of success. So thank you, Dr. Andrews, and to your team.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
I have one. Wow. That was just a terrific report. Thank you so much. For me, it's like feeling the pieces of a puzzle finally come together.
As we know, over the years, we've heard many things, we've felt many things, and experienced many things as relates to the Village and the school. And I just feel that we're in such a good place right now, and thank you, Dr. Andrews. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing. As I said at the beginning, I really didn't, you know, I've come here from the Midwest, and I really didn't know all the history, and it's taken me several years to really put things together. But, but what it took for you to put this school together and where it has gone from that point to this point today is really, truly amazing. It is a gem of a school. It's a small, it's almost like a small rural school sitting in the middle of this metropolitan area. You can't, you don't, you don't see that in, in a big city like this. And I feel very, very fortunate to be here because most of my experience in, and this is my 40th year in education, is, has been with small school districts. What you would think they were small, we thought they were big. And so the expectation of family, of high rigor and excellence, is just part of my DNA. And so I expect it, and I found it. And I didn't know that I would when I came. So thank you for the work that you've done to make this a great school because you are the founders or the godfather of the school. You've done a great job of, of really supporting the school. And, and I know there's going to be ups and downs all the time. It's just part of living in the political world as well as the educational world. They do collide, and we have to live within those means. So thank you for understanding and supporting.
Thank you. Do an outstanding job. We'll hope, we'll all hopefully see you.
Soon.
Soon, okay? All right. Yes, yes. Thank you for coming this evening and your presentation, well done.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
I have comments.
If you are here for public comments, please go to this podium and state your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
I am Mary Lou McGuire at 10627 Northeast 10th Court, Miami Shores, and I'm representing, several of us are here representing Miami Shores Estates and our problems with our vacation homes. Our neighborhood is our crossroads, and we are deteriorating in quality of life and safety. We need to get this on the agenda, and we need to know what we can do because it's our neighbor, you know, we had a small little family in there. It's, it's too dangerous. We cannot walk our dogs, our children, that we can't even, two weeks ago, we couldn't even get out of our, of our street. The cars parked over everywhere. We need to get it on the agenda and to see what we can do to control the vacation houses. We have five on one block. And 10:30 and 10:80 this weekend had problems. We needed the police, we needed the code enforcement. It's getting worse. And it's getting worse, and it's been going on for a few years, but now it's getting worse. So we need to know what we can do, and in this three minutes, we need to do, I need to know, can we get it on the agenda, or what do we do? We've been to code enforcement already. At that meeting, we had about 20 people representing us. They couldn't get here tonight. We do have several of our citizens here, but we need to know what we can do. It's serious.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Unfortunately, we'll maybe address it at the end of the meeting, but, you know, address it now, but thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for public comment? Thank you. Public comment is now closed.
Item 6A, approval of October 1st, 2019 Village Council Meeting Minutes.
Do I have a motion to approve?
A move to approve.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Item 7A, appointments to the Fine Arts Commission. There is one, one-year vacancy as a result of Ms. Hoffman's resignation. Fine Arts Commission applicants who were not selected during last week's board appointment process will be considered for such vacancy. Just keep in mind that Ms. Stella Ford rescinded her application for consideration this afternoon, and Ms. Tina Salverson does not meet the residency requirement. However, forfeits vote may override that requirement. None of the applicants are present today. Your board applications have been updated to reflect such change, and they're located in the upper right-hand corner. Okay, Mr. Sajdri, Enrique Medina has received majority vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Next item is 8A, presentation and update on Village website. This item is sponsored by Councilman Jonathan Mouts.
Ms. Mouts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It, it sort of speaks for itself in terms of the item issue, but I think all of us have been asked by constituents, and we've asked each other, we've asked higher powers, we've asked everybody what's going on with our website. I, I remember, I guess, two election cycles ago, right, Councilman Brady, we, we had all talked about it. I think 20 cycles ago, we talked about it. So we're just about there. Ms. Keely's here to give us a fabulous presentation about the next generation of the website, and I turn it over to her most capable hands.
So I was here before the previous council, and you approved an update to our current site. And at the time, we were going to go ahead with that redesign. However, after that approval, we received a lawsuit for ADA compliance. And so that put that on hold until we knew the outcome of the lawsuit, which has since settled, I believe it was last month. So in the interim, a lot of things kind of developed, and we found that the site that we had, we're going to do, wasn't quite up to speed. It didn't have the security we really needed, and it, it still, I think, lacked some simplicity and clean kind of functional, functionality that we were kind of looking for. So the redesign highlights that we're going to be adding with the new site is an industry standard that has the best practice tools to code the site with HTML. And HTML is the content and structure, and that is actually most, the best way to have ADA compliance on the website. So all of the content that we have should be easily readable for anyone with ADA readers. The other thing it uses is the CSS, which is Cascading Style Sheets that style the appearance of the content, so the font, the colors, which are also imperative to ADA compliance. JavaScript is just a regular kind of, sorry, it's used a lot in websites. So the one thing about the new website would be that it's more responsive and it's more intuitive, I think. Right now, our website is very difficult to find because of the tabs and the dropdowns, and I believe we have over 2,400 pages, something like that, so we can't really link things either if we have something on the police page, and then it takes you to another page to another page. So everything would kind of be directed, if you look under the resident tab, and it's also under public safety, it would still take you to the same page. So that would be more easily usable. And also, it would be integrated into mobile devices because most people access everything through their phone or an iPad or tablet, so that would be integrated as well. Again, the security of the framework, right now, we're running on very old software and things because we, the last time we started this was in 2011, so we need a little update on that. And then also, the vulnerabilities would be less because everything would be more secure. And user-friendly, that's really what we're looking for. In your packet, you had a memo from Mr. Benton that went to the Boynton Beach website. The administrative panel functionality, which is an issue we have right now because I'm kind of the only one who can find everything that needs to be done, and so it, it takes a lot of strength, it'll take a lot of strain off of me, and then the department heads will be easy, you know, be able to find their pages easily and update them themselves. So this is just an example of that. This looks nothing like what I deal with right now. So just to give you an idea, it also will cut down on staff time trying to get things done for the website. So we referenced Boynton Beach, and hopefully you had some time to look at it. I'll just bring it up. So this is the actual website. And there's, this is, their dropdowns for residents is pretty clean. They have very easy kind of tabs and buttons and widgets that you can use. It's very interactive, so Recreation and Parks has something like Recreation and Parks, Recreation and Parks.
There you go.
So tells you how to find a program. They have beach, a lot of beach and boat availability there. But we're actually implementing WebTrack. It's being implemented right now at the Recreation Center so that you can go online and register for a program. So that'll also be included in, in the new website redesign. So we're trying to get everything, just like building with their portal, trying to get as much as we can on the website and make it easy for everybody to use. I'm not sure as far as their website, if you have any questions, if you looked at it. The public safety is what I was looking for. So one of the other things I think that's been an issue is board meetings and agendas and minutes. And Isabella and I are going to work together because we do have a retention in Laserfish, and the meetings that are not included on Granicus, which is the council and planning and zoning and code enforcement, would be in the Laserfish system. So with that, we hope to have every link to that directly so that people can find those meetings easily. Does anybody have any questions on the Boynton Beach, if you've looked at it, or if, if you've... If you've looked at it, or if you find it, I think it's pretty clean and intuitive, a lot more user-friendly than what we have. If you're okay with this, I think Mr. Benton would just like a consensus that we can go ahead, because I've already started a site map kind of based on this. And we do have about a three-month timeline, just from start to finish.
Okay.
So it is my job, my one and only job, for the next three months to do this. So I have been working on it to try and get a jumpstart, given you approved this. And I do have some other websites that our current consultant has done, if you want to see them as well, but...
Yeah, so Lisa, some of the things that... I love this. It's very clean, as you say, and some of the things I would like to see included... I know we have lovely photos on our website now. I have no objection to using some of them. But I really would like to see some professional-level photography of some of our great new additions, and I know that you plan that. So I'm just saying it, because I think it adds a lot, both to this website and our future one, and because we have so much new. And I'm thinking about things like the Sculpture Garden, the farmer's market, a feature of a downtown business like they have done. Unity Day Plaza, 98 Winterfest, the Marshmallow Drop. So when we have active, new, fresh pictures, that I believe that helps people a lot to sort of find their way through to what they want. But one of the other things is, I don't know about the rest of you, but when you fill out a feedback form on a website, sometimes you have that lack of confidence that it's going to be followed up upon. And we have my MSV. So if you can incorporate my MSV as a way to give feedback, if all of you agree that it has been something easy to use, because a resident can include a photo of whatever their con... I would like to see that. I'd like to see it get used more. And I think integrating it into our website might help that, maybe in addition to a feedback form. You know, a place that they see something familiar, and they say, oh, I know they get that, or they've answered that. One content page I would love to see is one on sustainability. And I know that that's yet another page for you to do, but I have seen it on a lot of other city websites, and I'd like to see a really good synopsis of what we intend to You know, how are we addressing our vulnerability study? What are some of the things residents can look forward to and that we've already done? And the other thing that came to mind after reviewing that is the House of the Month page, so that we could feature some of those homes, that they don't go away after a month, that you can actually still see the photos. Pardon?
Archive of past houses.
Yes, yes. You know, maybe a year's worth or something. So I'd love to see that. And, yeah, and, you know, I went actually to the building department's site and was trying to look up some things, and I could use another tutorial in that.
There's... I've sent a link to Ismael on another city that has the same portal that does explain it, and I've asked him to kind of go over it, so that we can incorporate that.
Okay, thank you.
To Vice Mayor Birch's point on the pictures of all the wonderful things that are going on in our village. Completely agree. Great point. And to that point, let's make sure the photos that are up there reflect the totality of the people living in the village as well. Thank you. Good job.
Thanks.
Yeah, I want to thank you for spearheading this program. I think that there's something coming out on the 11th Judicial Circuit Court map, and you see my hair is going out, because it's not user-friendly, and we all have to do it in my profession. So I really, really will support you in any way you ask, if you make this more user-friendly for the village residents. And I know you will, because I know you will. So thank you very much.
Any other comments? Good job. Thank you for your hard work on this. I know you've been working hard.
I look forward to getting it done and having everybody be able to navigate through what the great things that we do here.
Thank you.
It's special.
Thank you.
Item 8B, discussion and possible action, authorizing the village manager to execute all related documents to effectuate the agreements between Miami Shores Village and the top three ranked firms, TY Lynn International, Kim Lee Horn, and George Gutierrez LLC, for professional, general, architectural, and engineering services per RFQ 2019-07-01. This item is sponsored by the village manager.
Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, so you have in your packet a memorandum from myself and our Assistant Public Works Director, Chris Miranda. As part two of the Competitive Negotiation Act, you... We had to go and negotiate with the three firms that you all had approved at our last council meeting. The committee has done that, and essentially what they did is they took an average of the prices that were submitted that by the three firms. We averaged them out. We then went back and negotiated down with them, and we came up, and we've attached the numbers that were actually agreed upon, so that when we have a project, for example, $20,000 to $100,000 project, whichever firm gets it, then the proposed fee would be 18% of the proposed cost of the project, which is in line, more than fair price for a project. In fact, all these numbers, we believe, are well within the guidelines for the averages for construction costs that are out there in the community, in the construction world today. Below average. Very good. So I would ask that you all approve these numbers, and with that, we have several projects in the hopper. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Miranda's here tonight that can answer for you. But at this point, I think it's pretty straightforward, and ask for your approval.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Lefredo?
Questions? Yeah, I looked through the price schedule, and I understand hourly rates and estimates and all that. But are you, in your professional opinion, because you know that you do this stuff all the time and I don't, are you satisfied that this is a reasonable basis for compensation and a work schedule? And it meets industry standards? In other words, we won't get people that'll be resentful of us, we made too good a bargain or anything like that?
No, no, we... No, it absolutely meets industry standards, and I actually went back and checked with some other agencies and where they were before. We went through the negotiation process with each firm to make sure we were well within line.
And you've checked with other governmental agencies?
Correct.
Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I also understand that the people who've been selected as the potential engineers going forward, they've all agreed to these numbers, correct?
That is correct, yes.
That's, from the lawyer's standpoint, that's the best news.
Agreed. Any other comments from the council? Vice Mayor Birch?
Yes. Mr. Miranda, does this mean that you'll be able to proceed more rapidly with these projects?
Absolutely. We'll be able to move right into design and construction and engineering services from any one of these firms immediately. They'll be under contract, ready to go.
So I commend you all for coming up with this, because I think it's the first time that we have done this, and it should really move those projects, of which we're all anxious to have them completed. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may...
Yeah, Attorney Seraphin.
Sorry, one more thing. I wanted to compliment Mr. Benton and his staff, because from my perspective, I think this is brilliant, because they've cut the timeline for each individual project by basically getting a continuing contract with multiple engineers. Less time spent on soliciting bids, less time spent negotiating dollar amounts. You can move right from approval of the project to doing the work, which lets us have more shovel-ready projects, tying, you know, doing a little segue to maybe the next item. But it's very difficult, under the Competitive Negotiations Act, to navigate your way through this to reach this result. And I think Tom and his staff did a terrific job and actually got buy-in from the engineers to numbers that, by definition, are below the average. I don't see how you could do any better than that.
And Mr. Davis is hiding behind the podium back there.
Oh, I didn't see him there.
A lot of it is thanks to him. So Mr. Davis and his staff...
And absolutely, Mr. Miranda. Thank you.
To everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Benton.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Vice Mayor Birch?
I was going to call Mr. Davis out if Mr. Benton didn't.
Madam Mayor?
Councilman Lefredo?
I would move approval.
I would second that. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 8C, discussion and possible action regarding the legislative agenda. This item is sponsored by Mayor Crystal Wagler.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As you all know, we discussed this last meeting, and I had some concerns. It's not necessarily concerns about what the manager proposed, because if you'll recall, the items that he proposed to go forth to the state with, on our behalf, I think are all very important, and I think they're all worthy, and I think they all make sense. And so I commend his recommendations. My concern, my larger concern was, we are one of the very few cities in Miami-Dade County that has not received money from the state in a record number of years. That's what my concern was. And so in the past, as I've seen it done before, when we're doing our legislative priorities, I would suggest to the council that you would consider, before the legislative session begins, that we workshop these items, meaning we have a conversation with our lobbyists and us as a body to collectively put our minds together to determine what our... What we believe the legislative agenda should be, what's in the best interest of our community. I think this way, one, we can share our thoughts directly with the lobbyists, and the lobbyists can directly give us some feedback. And two, we may all have... We may all be hearing different things, but if we're sitting here collectively, we can discuss it. And three, it gives us an opportunity to hear a bit about the legislative process. They're in committee weeks right now, and so we're kind of behind the eight ball in timing. But I wanted to throw it out there to you, if you would all be open to having a workshop in the summer. You have to kind of do it before we break for August, just so that we can collectively come up with ideas. And they may not be much different from this, but they may be more nuanced, right? And we should know what silos of funding are available at the state level. And once you know that, then you can kind of have a better idea of what you're going for. By way of example, I have been banding about with other folks in other communities, surrounding communities, about the possibility of doing a regional approach when it comes to our water and our, excuse me, our septic-to-sewer conversion issues, our seawall issues, because you get further when you have greater numbers. And unfortunately, it's too late for us to put something like that in play, but I think I would hope that this is something we would consider. We have to get our ducks in order to move forward with something like that. But in the end, it gives us a better chance and a better opportunity to perhaps get funding from the state. Likewise, we should also be clear on, you know, our governor and what his priorities are, and we should tailor what we ask for around what his potential priorities are, because that gives us a greater chance of bringing funding to our community, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's environment. We need to discuss that. And I think we hire these lobbyists to give us information, and I'm more comfortable if they're here, and I can ask questions, and they can give me some answers to help us as a body make a collective decision on behalf of our community to bring money to our community in order to help the manager do his job. Yes, Mr. Manager?
Madam Mayor, if I may interrupt just one.
Sure.
I have Mr. Kilman is on standby, if you want to call him. He's in committee week, his firm.
In committee week.
So... But I had him on standby in case you wanted to do that.
That's up to the council. I... We can certainly ask them some questions, if you all have the appetite to do so. We're going to get him on the line. Great.
Call has been forwarded to an automated voice management system.
Jonathan?
Jonathan, Tom Benton, Miami Shores. We have you on speakerphone here in the council meeting.
Hi. Hi, how are you? This is Mayor Crystal Wagler. We've got our whole council looking at you from the dais, and some of us here in the council have a few questions, and I think Vice Mayor Birch would like to ask you a couple quick questions about our legislative agenda. Thank you.
I apologize. I don't know if the phone is too far away, but I'm not able to hear any sound on your end.
Okay, hang on. We're going to try moving it a little bit and see if the reception's any better.
Put your mic over there, too.
Well, he can't hear us. That's the problem.
Oh, okay.
Alice, if you could speak up or...
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, Jonathan. I would like to ask you, if it's easier to present these issues, the mayor was talking about silos of funding. I have seen outlines presented by other entities in other cities, where you start out by talking about a lead topic, and then you have a list of subtopics that pertain to your city individually and make a case for your city. And I'm wondering if that is a more effective way to have our agenda in writing. I've seen, let's say, for example, how the school board does it. They have an introductory letter that bullet points their desires, and then they list the things in groups. Is that more helpful to you going forward?
I am so sorry. I apologize to you this. We're having a difficult time on hearing. Can I give you another number to dial for Mario Bailey, who's part of our conversion firm as well?
Sure, Jonathan.
Go ahead.
I apologize. Sorry for that. Because we're up in Tallahassee, and I want to make sure that we get to a spot where we can hear everything. Mario's number is... 205... 205... 246... 246... 3932... 3932... 205... 246... 3932... Do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Clear.
Once we get him on the line, please remind him that he's on tape.
Hello?
Jonathan?
Yes, I'm grabbing him now.
Okay.
All right, let's try it again, Jonathan. And just to remind you, we're on live here at the council meeting, so you're on tape and being recorded.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, so did you need my question again? I'll try to make it shorter. I wonder if it's more effective for us to submit in writing to you our topics, and then in the subtopic section, make sure that you know the particular... The desires of the particularity of our village, so that we would give a slight historical basis for what we're requesting, as well as listing the topics in general. So it makes sense?
Hey, Jonathan? Jonathan, this isn't working out for us. We can't hear you, and there's a lot of background noise. So we're going to continue with the meeting, and I will call you in the morning. All right, we'll call you tomorrow.
Do you want to carry on with your comments, Vice Mayor Birch, or just get them on the record?
Well, let me give an example of what I'm trying to say. I'm passionate about the drainage project, septic-to-sewer conversion, and sea level rise mitigation. So is that a topic? So, is that a topic, and then underneath that, something like, "A critical need for Miami Shores Village's environment and sustainability is a legislative establishment of a dedicated and recurring source of state revenues, funding, to meet the needs of village drainage projects, septic-to-sewer conversion, and control of nutrient pollution to Biscayne Bay." So, that to me is a concise way of saying what we want. And then, if we find partners through the year, city partners, that would like to also take up that, that we know that we're together with them. So, there, I had done similar ones for the charter school, which I know more about than other things, but I know that capital outlay is crucial, I know school security funding allocation is crucial, and I know that the increase in FTE for students, to try to get us back to the pre-recession level, is crucial. So, those are just some topics.
I have to say, I think, you know, a more specific tailored approach is appropriate. But again, without having the benefit of having the dialogue back and forth, I just was suggesting that, in the future going forward, that the council may consider having someone from our lobbyist team that we pay, to come present to us on how this actually works. And having said that, the only thing that I'd like to add to Mr. Benton's priorities, I know that there might be available some funding out there for the aging community, for aging-in-place community, so I would ask that, we just, in addition to what he has, we ask for programming for the elderly. I know there's some money out there, and that's available, and we do put on very good programming for folks over at the community center, and over at the old Catholic charity building. That's the only thing that I would add, if you all were amenable to that.
You also said something last time about criminal justice funding.
That's available, but we would have, I don't know specifically what our officers may need, and that's a conversation for the chief. Mr. Manager?
We have discussed that, the chief and I.
Great.
And there are, whatever's available, I mean, our needs in the police department are pretty much capital and equipment needs, not so much gang-related things and stuff like that, which there is money for, but our community, a lot of those things just wouldn't apply for our community. But the chief is, always looks for stuff in that arena.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Councilman Lefredo.
Yes. Amen to what the vice mayor said, because we're coming, I know we're coming close when these, that 40,000 grant, until we get the specs on the wastewater, we're coming up on that, and so, I, amen to what she said. The only thing I would add, this, I'm going back to ancient history, but I have to, my prior eight years on the council, from '05 to '13, every time, we would get our lobbyists, would get all these things in the budget, and then the governor would veto them. I mean, this happened eight years in a row. Then I come, this year, I'm back on the council, it happened again. So, I think that when we have our conversation with our lobbyists, we ask them, how do we get through that last hurdle? That we figure a way to get through that last hurdle, or we shape our programs, so that we overcome that last hurdle.
I could, I'll keep my comments away, so, thank you, Councilman Lefredo.
Madam Mayor? I would like to second my support for including something around the, you know, senior supporting the aging-in-place, and the, if the council would be okay, the other thing, I've been asked by the, one of the things that the mayor mentioned about leveraging, you know, communities, we are a founding member of the Green Corridor, you know, special taxing district, a number of the leaders from those municipalities have expressed similar issues around getting funding for water projects and septic-to-sewer conversion. So, that's just more of something, if there's any way we can align the messaging coming from us with them. But the only other thing I would add is that a PACE itself appears to be under attack. There is a bill, which I'm not sure if it's going to get out of committee, but basically adds a significant amount of underwriting and other changes, requirements of the PACE program, that would basically make it not possible, you know, to exist, and it's something that's leveraged, you know, heavily by the state, but, you know, heavily by our community to provide for, you know, resiliency improvements to their homes. And if the council is supportive of, you know, the PACE program in general, you know, I think it'd be important for us to also state, you know, through our lobbyists, that it's something that we support, and we would want to see the continued prosperity.
In other words, is what you're saying.
Yes, to leave it alone, exactly. And then, the only other thing I did want to mention, which I believe we already have in there, is our strong lobbying to, you know, for supporting home rule, and being able to regulate vacation rentals beyond what we're allowed to do through the state legislature today. But I believe that's already a high item on our list. All right, thank you.
So, through the mayor, if I might.
Vice Mayor Birch?
I wonder if that, you know, municipal home rule should be a topic, and then underneath that, we could list, not only, and I think it's good to insert a link to our ordinance, so that they can see that our ordinance is simple and clean, and that we're, it was only passed in 2017, and that we're trying to govern those vacation rentals as a municipality. And then beyond that, we're also trying to continue our participation in the PACE program that we were a founding member of. So, it seems like some of these things actually fit in municipal home rule preservation, so.
Madam Mayor, just, that's one other question of the council. One of the things, discussions with our lobbying team, would any of you be willing, if need be, and I know how busy you all are, to go to Tallahassee if need be, and fly to perhaps a committee meeting, or to meet with somebody, whether it be a senator or representative at the Capitol in Tallahassee, if need be?
I'm gonna, I'm going to go, because we don't have a big presence in Tallahassee, so I'm definitely in. And it's not just meeting with one person, it's probably an all-day set of meetings, and we meet with our legislators, and we meet with some other key legislators that have the ability to make the decisions. So, if you're asking the question, my answer is yes.
Yeah, and I, if you, yeah, if it's a situation where it would, you know, it would make a difference, absolutely.
I'll go as well.
I would go if it related to charter school, because I believe I know that issue very well. So, that's what, the kind of committee that I would be willing to attend.
Thank you. I think part of it is just having a presence, and showing up, and being there, and having a face that they see, right, that attaches to something, that attaches to our community. So, I think it's an important endeavor. It doesn't have to be day days, it can be something that our lobbyists, in fact, day days is almost a waste of time, but...
They've been there many times.
Listen, I've gone for 20 years, every year. So, it's almost, we have our lobbyists set something up for us as a group, and they set up the meetings, and we go, and we have the conversations, we make the plea, and at least, we've done it in person, as a body, representing the constituency and the people that elected us to be here. So, thank you for asking, I was gonna say that in my last bit of comments, Mr. Manager, so thank you. So with that, I think, do we have a, are you adding something to, did you add, did you add anything else to the legislative agenda? No, except that we want to remain in PACE?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm looking to add, going, trying to, attempting to find funding for elderly programming. Okay? And do we need to?
Do we have a consensus?
Do we have a consensus on it? All right. Thank you guys for your time on this. It's just very important, and I'm kind of passionate about this stuff, so just want to kind of try to bring in as much, I want to bring as many resources to our village as we can, so I thank you guys for your time and listening.
Absolutely. No, Madam Mayor, I wanted to ask if, do we, can we, are we also agreeing by consensus to ask for a, you know, workshop to be, to be set up next, before the next, okay, great.
Before the August break.
Correct.
July 2020 Legislative Agenda Workshop, placeholder.
So noted.
Thank you.
Announcements. The 2019 Miami Shores Fine Arts Exhibit Series hosts Mateo Serna Zapata, Congruous Contradictions. It is a dance performance celebrating peculiar movements of the human body. The opening reception will be on Friday, October 18th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. And the Halloween Puppy Palooza will be held at the Plaza 98 event on October 19th, from 5:45 PM to 7:45. Dress your leash pad in your Halloween vest, sip and stroll as you participate in a variety of activities on Northeast Second Avenue and 98th Street. Shores Spooktacular will be held on October 26th, from 5:30 PM to 8:30 PM, at the community center. Children ages nine and under are invited to join the fun. For more information, call 305-758-8103. The next village council meeting will begin at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 5th, at Village Hall Council Chambers. Miami Shores Farmer's Market starts Sunday, November 10th, at Optimist Park, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Come enjoy fresh produce from local farms and prepared foods for every taste. Miami Shores Gobble Wobble 5K Run will be held on November 24th, at 7:30 AM. Register online at www activate.com. Online registration ends Saturday, November 23rd. And would you rather receive the newsletter via email? Residents can sign up to receive the monthly newsletter by email. Simply use the Contact Us link on the front page of our website. Be sure to use your email, include your name and mailing address. The communication specialist will take care of the rest. And please remember to visit the village website for more information on village events, departments, and to sign up to receive agenda notifications, village council comments.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Seraphin.
If it please, Madam, can I just have two minutes to make a point of information for you all, as it may or may not impact what you might want to say during announcements?
Absolutely, thank you.
I just wanted to, for the edification of the council, and to the extent some of you may already know, I apologize. At the last code enforcement board meeting, which was earlier this month, there were a number of cases that came up for vacation home rentals. And there's, in the community, there's a couple of different perceptions about this, but I'll offer you my perception of it. We set up a system, when we passed our ordinance, and the system is now starting, in my view, to work. And what I mean by that is, we caught some violators, they had their day before the board, they were adjudicated to be in violation, hefty fines have been assessed, which are liens on the property, and that's the way the system is supposed to work. And recently, and I believe this is a function of some of what we've done, one of the homeowners found out about the same time that we did, that the tenant they had leased to was breaking the rules. And moments before we got there, the homeowner was out there, you know, beating heads and getting the tenant back in line, and correcting the violation, which is what we want to happen. So, no way to diminish the fact that there is a problem, because there clearly is a problem, but we set up a system to work on it, and the system is working its way, and, you know, I'm hopeful that as we go forward, it'll get more and more compliance, because this is really the first time that we've been levying substantial fines, and I'm talking thousands of dollars. So, just wanted to let you all know that, to the extent you might not already.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lefredo, any comments?
Briefly, Madam Mayor, in view of what the city attorney said, I'll confine my comments to the cuisine at the recently opened restaurants on Second Avenue. I took my family Sunday, a week ago, to Amarene, and from what my wife and my daughter-in-law said, the Greek salad is to die for, and the desserts are to die for, because I had those. And then, Saturday, late afternoon, we took some friends from, in-laws from out of town, my son's in-laws, to the gastrotire, and I normally am a cheeseburger with tomato and ketchup and salt on it type of guy, but you've got to try their cheeseburger. I was sopping the plate with the bun, I was cutting the bun and getting all the food. It's really good, so, that's all I have to say, make me hungry.
Councilman Brady?
No, I just wanted to thank the council for, you know, getting through a nice agenda tonight. I want to let the, you know, the residents know, they're concerned that if it were, you know, I think that if it were up to us, if we had the legislative authority, we would probably outright ban vacation rentals in Miami Shores. We do not at this time. We are looking into our toolbox for additional things that we can do, that can help constrain the situation, but we do ask you, in the meantime, to please, you know, call code enforcement, call the police anytime there's a problem, you know, make sure we're building the paper trail, and to please absolutely write your state legislature, legislator, and make sure you have both your senator and your member of the House, and let them know how much it's affecting you negatively. We're gonna do the same thing, but we want to make sure to continue to communicate that to Tallahassee, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Melz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to send a thank you and a shout out to Senator Jason Pizzo. Smile, because he's watching us right now. And in all seriousness, he's one of the hardest-working advocates that anybody could have in the legislature, and he's ours. So, he's working for our residents, he's working for the greater good of Miami Shores, and he already put on his calendar our workshop agenda for next July. So, he knows what's happening, and I appreciate his support. And with regard to the other issues on the short-term rentals, I'd like to give it a little time for what Attorney Seraphin has said, but, you know, if it continues, because we're all being inundated with emails from certain residents, and I can't blame them if it's such an overwhelming concern, maybe it's something that we have some sort of meeting outside of this meeting to discuss, because it's, you know, it can't go on for too much longer without the residents knowing that we're doing everything that we can do. But, you know, our hands are tied, they really are. I look forward to the remedies which are now in place, or the process and remedies, and maybe that will have a change effect, but if we still are hearing the same complaints, we need to at least hear it in a public forum, and let everybody know once, and not for all, but once, that we are supporting them to the best of our own abilities, we're not ignoring them. So, that's what I have to say about that.
If I may, the other thing I would note, if people are renting out their homes for vacation rentals, very good argument that they're not protected by homestead, so these code enforcement liens, which ordinarily could not be, could not result in a foreclosure of a homestead house, become even more significant.
Vice Mayor Birch?
So, not to belabor the point, I did watch the code enforcement board meeting. By the way, there were some complaints about not being able to hear, so I know that you're really working on that, and you and I are the main violators of the sound machine, so I'm trying. In the meantime, I wanted to mention that there is another king tide between October 25th and 31st, and I made a little tour after the last one, and I think that we've seen some improvement, especially in Shores Estates, and a backflow preventer that was installed, it seems to be really working, as well as a berm that was installed. So, I think that we've made some progress in that regard, and I'm really excited about that. Evening in the Courtyard, I hope all of my colleagues will be there. It will be a wonderful event. The schools worked really hard to make it a welcoming event to our entire community, so that they can celebrate that they have a school that is amazing, and 15 years old. So, I wanted to answer a comment from the last meeting, where it was contemplated that maybe Miami Shores Elementary is not a historic building. It is. It is historically designated, and that there are $5 million in capital improvements in the pipeline through the district that will be made to that school, which will include the classroom space needed to implement the fifth-grade I-Pre program. So, just to be clear, that is a sort of correction to what was alleged the last time. And I want to thank Miami Shores Police Department officers, each and every one of them, whose names I do not all know, that were involved in Walk Bike to School Day. It's a really challenging thing for police to work on, and they, our community is blessed with some officers that are very experienced in that, and really do a great job. And it was a, it was a good day for making drivers aware, as is the smart trailer at 103rd, right by Miami Shores Elementary. I think it's a great move, and I think people can hardly miss that as they go by. So, I want to say thanks for that. And that's it.
Any other comments?
No, Madam Mayor, I just wanted to say thank you to Vice Mayor Birch for sending me a picture of the kids getting ready to go on the Bike and Walk to School Day. I, yes, I had to travel for, for business, and my wife was able to drop them off early, and they were super excited. They enjoyed it. So, thank you.
Any other comments? All right, there being no further business of the village council this evening, this meeting is adjourned.